So with that, welcome to the Monday, April 21st, City Council Meeting. I appreciate everybody being here. You've seen the agenda. It's been presented. We will begin with invocation. Archbishop Slater? Have we seen a, have we had a Father Wiley sighting lately? We're gonna have to go look for him. You've been filling in lately.
Yeah, he's okay.
Alright, good. So if you come forward and offer an invocation, then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, good evening, everyone. Shall we pray? Father, we thank you for this again, for all that you've done and all that you're about to do. We thank you for this council, Lord, as you give them the mindset to help this city. And as we grow, Lord, we thank you. Father, bring us peace. Bring us unity. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you please conduct a roll call.
Mayor Feller.
Present.
Mayor President.
Present.
Councilman Boyett.
Present.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilwoman Matthews.
Present.
Councilwoman Weeks.
Present.
Councilwoman White.
Present. All present and accounted for. It's been a very busy month, council. Appreciate all of the time commitments and all of the generosity with your time, with your attention over these past few weeks. And I do truly mean that. Next, we'll move directly into Section 4, Recognizations and Presentations.
Mayor.
Yes.
May I ask, do you mind if I introduce Ms. Akithia before you start?
No, let's begin with that. If you, if council will allow it, well, actually, before we do the adoption of the agenda. Apologies, I skipped over that, too. So I'm over two even last three minutes. Madam, Ms. Gatz, would you please?
So, Mayor and council in public, I would just like to introduce everybody to Akithia Reese, our deputy clerk. She started today, and I am so excited that she's gonna be here with us to eventually fill these shoes when I retire one day. So, welcome, and we're here for you.
Thank you. I'm very excited to be here.
Thank, thank you and welcome. It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a busy time. You'll very quickly see. In moments, it'll feel like it's drinking from a fire hose, and at other times, it'll feel like, you know, you're just kinda limbo. But it's, it'll level out. It'll feel natural very, very quickly. Your resume speaks highly of you already, so I'm sure it's gonna be an easy transition.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Alright, so with that, we'll move to an adoption of the agenda that I erroneously skipped over a moment ago. Council, is there a motion to approve or amend the agenda as presented?
A motion to approve.
To approve. Alright, motion has been made to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second? Alright, motion has been seconded. Is there any debate?
I don't have any debate, but I do have a question for item under New Business 8.2. I'm having some problems downloading the memo, as well as the permit application. And I'd just like to see if I can get that before we discuss it. It's not coming up right now, so I just...
It is in there. Would it be possible for us to just get Brad or someone to come over and step up here? Perfect. We'll make sure that it's available.
We'll get some hard copies, too, in the interim as a backup plan.
Perfect. Alright, this motion has been made and properly seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please raise your hands. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you, everybody. So now, we'll move into recognitions and presentations. We had a representative scheduled to be here from the Wayne Community College Small Business Center to receive the National Small Business Week proclamation. We'll present that to the Small Business Center at Wayne Community College in a later date. But what we will do is go ahead and read it into the record, if that's okay. Alright, give me just a second. National Small Business Week proclamation. Whereas America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risks, work hard. And whereas from the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise. And whereas small business owners and Main Street businesses have energy and a passion for what they do. And whereas when we support small businesses, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique character. And whereas because this country's 33 million small businesses create nearly two out of three jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur economic growth in America without discussing ways to support our entrepreneurs. And whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas Goldsboro supports and joins in this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best, grow their businesses, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now therefore be it resolved that the Goldsboro City Council does hereby proclaim May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as National Small Business Week in Goldsboro, North Carolina, and declares support for our small businesses, recognizes the innovations and contributions of small businesses, and urges the residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants during Small Business Week and throughout the year. And witness whereof, I am here and to set my hand and affix the seal of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, this the 21st day of April, 2025.
Mr. Mayor, we have Kimber Rocha here to accept this nomination or the...
The acceptance proclamation. Okay. We can do that. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Kimber Rocha, and we have a family business downtown Goldsboro called Rye Always Fresh. I also am honored to serve on the DGGC Board, and I serve as the Merchant Chair. And just wanted to, this evening, recognize all of our downtown businesses. North Carolina is the second state in the nation as the best place to do business. In addition to that, we are honored to be a part of Downtown Goldsboro, which is an accredited North County Main Street community. We have many resources that support all of us. We have the Small Business Center at Wayne Community College. We also have the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce. So we appreciate all of the support from the City of Goldsboro, as well of our, as well as our City Council members.
Good. Thank you so much. Alright, here.
I'm here for support.
There you go, there you go. Next, next on our agenda is item 4.2. Another item that does not require a vote, Benefits That Benefit Children. Mr. Livingston, if you would please brief us and call forward those who will be speaking.
This is supposed to be a presentation by Pierce Insurance. The City of Goldsboro recognizes the efforts of its employees in generating over $7,500 for UNC Children's Hospital. The donation is being presented by benefits that benefit children in an organization that partners with employers to support children's health. This contribution reflects the city's continued commitment to its community and well-being of its citizens.
And for clarification, Pierce Insurance is our broker, correct?
That's correct.
Perfect. And that, hence the relevance, to connect everybody that hadn't already put that together. Mr. Livingston, can you briefly say which products they provide for us?
Mostly just the supplemental benefits, things like that, that nature.
It's good to have a partner that's also giving back. So if the presenters would come forward?
And good afternoon, everyone. I'm Doug Russell from Benefits That Benefit Children. Nice to see you, everybody. Thank you for having us here today. I'm excited to be here. I'm excited to be here for a couple of different reasons. But Benefits That Benefit Children is a cause marketing campaign that's designed to give back to the communities that we do business. And so if you think of typical fundraising, you can do auctions, you can do charity golf events, you can donate at the grocery store, you can round up and things of that nature. But we want to do something a little bit different. We want to incorporate charitable giving into our everyday lives. So we partnered with Pierce Insurance Agency to say, okay, we're educating employees on their valuable benefits. How do we raise money while doing so, where it doesn't cost the employees anything? So for every employee that meets with a Pierce Insurance Benefit Counselor, $10 is raised just by simply viewing the benefits, to be educated on the benefits. And that comes from the insurance carriers that give up from Pierce Insurance Agency, as well as Benefits That Benefit Children. So it's really just a reduction of the profit margins from the insurance carriers that help kind of facilitate this donation. And then we have products such as a LifeLock and Legalese, where $0.90 and then a dollar respectively, per employee, per month, when they sign up for the benefits, is donated to UNC Children's Health, as long as those products are, continue to be offered through peers and those providers out there. And again, it's no reduction from the benefits that are being offered, it's no price increase. So this is truly kind of a give back from the, you know, carriers that we do business with. So right now, I have a kind of a check that kind of notates the $7,500 donation that the employees of the City of Goldsboro help facilitate over this. But before I kind of present this, just a couple of quick things on UNC Children's Hospital, and why that was chosen as the Children's Hospital. So they are nine of the 11 children's specialties that are nationally ranked in. They're ranked as one of the top children's hospitals in the U.S., according to U.S. News, for the 16th straight year out there. They have over two dozen facilities throughout the state, and they're looking to expand that. So no matter where you are located in the state, you can find a UNC Children's Hospital close to you. In addition, they serve over 70,000 children from across all 100 counties in the state of North Carolina per year. And they do not, I'll call it discriminating against any child, so no matter insurance, no matter ability to pay, they will service all children out there. And this money has actually gone to the Excellence Fund, which is a fund that's used for the most critical needs within the children's hospital, and also patient support systems out there as well, which aren't typically institutionally funded. So they require the donations to fund those patient support systems. So again, thank you, and thank you to your employees for participating in this, allowing us to raise the money. And I don't know, Lonnie, if you want to say anything, or...
Well, no, we just, we're just thrilled to be able to serve your employees. And it's a real blessing, especially to work with these two wonderful ladies. They care so much about the employees, and so they make, we wanted to give not just the check, but we have a plaque Velma would like to give you ladies as well. For, you know, they care so much about the benefits, they want to make sure the employees are educated, and that's what drives the donations as well. So we just thank you for working with us, and we'd love to continue to work with you, and thank you so much. Is there anything, Velma, you would like to say?
Just nothing.
Okay. Thank you guys so much.
Would you like the council to get in here for that presentation?
Sure. Mr. Dove, how would you like for us to do this? Would you like to get the manager down there and then be able to take a picture with the council just back here? Is that alright?
That'd be great.
No, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next on our agenda, we will move to Section 5, Public Comment Period. The public comment period policy is, of course, available on both doors as you're coming in. Madam Clerk, would you please go down the roll?
Our first speaker is Natalia Newkirk.
Ms. Newkirk?
Hello, everyone. Nice to meet you. My name is Natalia Newkirk.
Just one sec. I'm sorry. Give me one second. Let him get that on the screen.
I want to use my whole three-minute shot. No, it don't take me long to say what I have to say.
I'm sorry.
No, we'll give you, we want to make sure that you have your full allotment of time. We don't want to mess that up. Transitioned a little bit too quickly. Input from your computer or an input from IT? Ms. Newkirk, if you'd be more comfortable having a seat for just a moment, and then we'll call you back up as soon as we get this resolved. Alright, come forward. Alright, yes, ma'am.
Well, y'all know who I am. I'm Natalia Newkirk, also known as Moses Drop It Low on Facebook. And last Thursday, I encountered one of your former councilmen, Taj Polak, who told me to come here back in December of 2022 and present a few things to y'all. One of those cases was Michelle Nguyen, who was killed in 1995, and Tamika Bridgen, who was killed in 2001. And next month, we'll make 24 years that she's been missing. So take a good look at her face, because as long as I sit in Goldsboro, I'm gonna keep going back there on Reekstra Street, looking for her, trying to find her, because I know that's the last place I seen her when I was a child. We stand up here and say liberty and justice for all, and as I said, I've seen no liberty, no justice. Y'all heard me out here interceding and praying earlier when I came to support Mr. Matthews. Congratulations again. And that was because I seen a criminal murdering drug dealer, Mr. James Bridges, who resides at 507 Bunce Drive, with Nikki Bridges, who terminated my whole entire life for 30-something years, had my children ripped away from me. James solicited Sade Stevens $100 to jack his meat. And Sade has been locked up for over 10 years now, after her mama told all of us to go sell our home parts. And Gayler, I asked you last week, have you ever been molested? You said no. Well, it doesn't feel good. I've been molested from 12 all the way up until the age of about 19 or 20, when I can get out of sex trafficking, after this woman told us to go sell. I tell. Where is the liberty and justice for all? Ms. Weeks, you know I have my little cousin with me now. They have been harassing her all weekend, threatening to send Nikki's younger children over there to jump on her, and I'm not gonna allow anything like that to happen, and I don't want to get in no trouble, because y'all know that I'm fighting for my kids. My children used to come in here and present with me. Y'all know that. I haven't seen my children since October the 8th, so anything is a trigger for me right now. I don't want these nice men with them handcuffs to be coming to harass, arrest me. So please do something with Nikki and James Bridges over there at 507 Bunce Drive, the most vicious human sex traffickers I've ever seen in my life. If we're gonna stop human sex trafficking, we're gonna stop with them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Albert Van Kleek.
First, I want to say congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Looking forward to more great things happening in the city. Almost two years ago to the day, my neighborhood watch group petitioned city code enforcement to address blight that was getting out of control in our neighborhood. So tonight, I'm here to express gratitude to everyone who had a hand in addressing the issues, and most especially to Councilwoman Taylor, for her leadership, hard work, and accomplishments, and actions taken to begin the revitalization and restoration of District 3. Councilwoman Taylor's dedication to reclaiming areas that had fallen into a sad state is inspiring and deeply appreciated. She genuinely cares about our city and the vibrant communities that make up its diverse tapestry. Her efforts in getting burned and blighted abandoned properties torn down has made a significant impact, a crucial and critical step in reclaiming and restoring a neighborhood that had been struggling. Reducing blight is a vital first step in moving forward. The negative effects of blight are well documented. Blighted properties heightened the need for increased police services, code enforcement, and property maintenance. And while blight may be in the eye of the beholder, for the record, it's defined as the deterioration in the condition of buildings and lots that negatively affect the neighborhood's health, safety, and appearance. Reducing blight is one of the first steps towards ensuring that all residents live in safe neighborhoods and letting citizens know that their city leadership is committed to protecting and promoting public health, safety, and welfare. Blighted properties are also often taxed delinquent, hampering municipalities in their efforts to make other needed upgrades and services. By addressing these challenges, Councilwoman Taylor is making a difference. So tonight, thank you, Councilwoman Taylor, for your perseverance and hard work. I and many others will continue to support your efforts to create safe and welcoming neighborhoods for all. Together, we can ensure that our city continues to grow and thrive. Now, on to land use and sustainable community development. Thank, thank all of you. I know it's a group effort, but I know you led the effort. That's it. Thank you.
Mayor, that's our last speaker.
Alright, then we'll close the public comment period, and we'll move to Section Number 6, the Consent Agenda. Mr. Livingston, if you would please hear any remaining questions on the consent agenda, and then present it for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, we have six items on the consent agenda. One is consistent of an operating budget amendment of several items that you have previously approved for either purchase or service delivery. One is a GW28 land lease agreement, which is essentially where the pocket park is going to be as soon as we get the environmental assessment done and start building it. They, that would be under our control, that ground there. An agreement with Mount Olive Pickle to postdate the agreement so that we can get reimbursed. It should have been dated a certain date, and this will just make sure there's never any issues with us getting reimbursed. A proposal for CDM Smith to submit a capital grant for PFAS studies on behalf of the City of Goldsboro. That's basically, they're doing, they have a $500,000 grant, now they want to resubmit the application for some infrastructure improvements. Resolution approving the local water supply plan, that's a long-range, detailed assessment of where we get our water from, how much we can withdraw, and our future outlook. And the department monthly reports, entertain any specific questions any council members might have.
Council, are there any questions? I realize these are some heavy things, but it's all things that are either repeats from previous years or have been discussed respectively over the last year. So hearing no questions, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll call.
Mayor Gayler.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Boyett.
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor. Councilwoman Matthews. Councilwoman Weeks.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
All in being in favor, motion passes unanimously. Consent agenda is approved. Alright, now we will move to old business, item 7.1. This one is one that, if we're honest, probably could have also been on the consent agenda, but it's something that has not been reviewed by council in some time, so it made sense to bring it back in front of the council, just to make sure everyone's on the same page of what's going on. So if you would, deliver 7.1 to us.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Good to be here. I'm Jamie Stanley from Public Works. And I'm, for lack of a better term, the ring leader of our design process for a new public safety complex. 2024, we did an RFQ to try to determine, could we repair our existing facility? And as you see in my background information, the bottom line is it's gonna cost tens of millions of dollars to strip our existing facility to the studs for new power, plumbing, internet, everything. Because it's not up to code based on today's design standards. It's not big enough if it did redo it. So we decided to move forward with this to design a new facility that will meet our needs now and in the future, and we're already in the process of doing that with Bobbit. The Police Department, Fire Department, other departments are all participating in this. It's a very robust process we've been having. We've been visiting other locations, trying to see what works, what doesn't work. And we have an excellent team of Bobbit Construction and their architects, Davis Kane. They have been serving words recently for public safety design. They just were clearly the best choice for this. But for the good news, the first phase is to figure out what we need to build and what's... But for the good news, the first phase is to figure out what we need to build and what's it gonna cost. That's what this contract is about. It's $180,000. And we already have a directed grant from the state to pay for this. We have $1.6 million to use for this Bobbit contract, to make repairs to the existing facility, to basically tide it over for another summer or so with some additional HVAC equipment. And also money can be used to purchase land to put this facility on. So there's still many more decisions to be made by you, but we need information. And so this will give us the process to keep following, to identify what we need, what's it gonna cost, need to make modifications to that, and then we proceed to the next phase, would be land acquisition, construction planning, and that kind of stuff. So even though it was a directed grant, it's not coming out of city funds, we still need your blessing.
Council, are there any questions? Again, I'll just reiterate, this is to use monies that were received from the state as a directed grant that have to be used for a public safety complex in the future. The total grant was a little over $1.6 million. This would be using just over $180,000 of that to go ahead and get a design, a location of those things pulled together. Again, we already approved the receipt of the grant, but for obvious reasons, wanted to make sure the council was fully aware of what we were discussing. Any questions at this time?
I do have just one. Just, not that I object to anything that was said, but my worry is, or my concern, is when we built the fire station, police department some years back, it was a state-of-the-art building. It was great. Do we have somebody that is gonna be on your team that will pull from lessons learned as we built that building? Like foundation, where it cracked, and those type of deals? Are we gonna have somebody?
Our current facility, the bulk of it's fifty years old. Now, we do have that new addition. It's only like six years old. All your concerns about foundation studies, I mean, things today are done in a totally more thorough manner than in the seventies, as far as soil analysis and things like that. But the biggest thing that Bobbit brought, in my opinion, was their architect team of Davis Kane. They are specialists in every branch of engineering. They'll have soil engineers. They'll have structural engineers. They'll have special architects that focus on police facilities because of special storage for weapons and things. And they have a special team that does fire department requirements. So it'll be designed at a different level than our previous facility.
I understand that, and I agree with you wholeheartedly that you made a wonderful choice with the actual firm that you went with. But I still think we need to draw off lessons learned as far as the things that went on, because even though it's a fifty-year building, you know, and I understand that standards have improved.
Right.
Some of the things that happened to the building that we had shouldn't have happened.
Agreed.
You know what I'm saying? So I'm just asking that we pull off of lessons learned, so we don't make the same mistakes twice. That's all I'm asking.
I think that's completely and total agreement with you.
And we really are having, we have these Zoom meetings, the police chief, fire chief, they're involved, and we're literally moving the offices around, worrying about the flow, worrying about the public coming in and out, how to handle community events, and a lot of things that we've learned and that they've learned from doing other facilities. We've literally been to a half a dozen. And in some places, they're brand new, and they move in, they're already too small, because they don't think about any growth and cut a few too many corners. And so we're trying to not make those mistakes. By building a joint facility, it really saves a lot of money, as opposed to two facilities. We could have a lot of shared spaces. We could have maybe one big shared conference room and a single command center for emergency operations. So we get some economies of scale by doing that, but it's been a good process to be a part of, and it's got a bunch of smart guys we've hired to help us with this.
The biggest mistake we'd made was trying to piecemeal an old building with a newer building and trying to get parts that really didn't work together well, and then tried to reduce the cost even more. And you had an engineering, a system that wasn't engineered to work with the building as it was designed and then added on to. And so you compounded the problem by doing that. And so I think we've learned our lesson, fortunately.
And hopefully, our plan is, maybe the July timeframe is to have Andy Speck from Bobbit to come and give you a presentation on here's what our best projection is of the future, here's what we think it's gonna cost, and entertain more of your questions, and then we'll figure out where to go from there.
Councilman White's comments, I certainly will like. I mean, there's, bottom lines, we shouldn't have had crack in the way that we did. So you gotta get the site preparation as well as done, and done a little bit better.
Well, this whole AIA contract we're involved in, this design-build process, it's gonna put the responsibility on Bobbit. There's not gonna be any finger pointing to what contractor is responsible. Ultimately, they are the guarantor. They're the warranty provider. And so that's how we kind of make sure those things don't happen where nobody's responsible.
So council, any other questions? Yes, sir.
Just one. It's been a couple of months since I had any conversation with Chief Stempian or Chief West about the study that was going on to help us figure out where this new facility needs to be located. Is there an update, just, or is that just still?
No, no, that, this has gone as far as, we think we need about ten acres to have enough room for parking in this facility, and they're talking about something like 90,000 square feet. So I've looked around. The city doesn't own any property that large, and so we're... But that's part of the stuff Bob is gonna help us with, is trying to determine places that may work or may not work. We're kind of limbed into, fire department really needs to be in a certain geographical location because of their coverage needs. The police department's more flexible as far as where they can locate. They don't, I don't say they don't care, but like I say, they patrol. They're not a geographic area only. So it's a bunch of response times, and it's a bunch of stuff that the Davis Kane architects know about, how you have to manage firehouses for meeting certain codes and requirements. So once we identify, kind of, we have an area identified where we've got to go. Then it's gonna be a matter of getting, I mean, maybe Realtor or other people in the city to try to determine what kind of property would be available.
Okay. That was sort of the context of the question I was asking. So the last conversation I had with them, we're still trying to figure out that general location. I didn't know if we had that.
Right. And there's been a couple of good locations, but they've already gone up for commercial development, so we're a little slow pointing that out. But this is still a long process, and by the time we, by the time we figure out what to build and how we're gonna fund it, we can find the property, and that won't be quite as hard.
For those of us who now feel like we have heartburn and ingestion going on after you said ten acres, let's go ahead. Is there any further questions on seven dot one? Is there a motion to approve item seven dot one in the resolution? The resolution presented under seven dot one as presented.
So moved.
All right. A motion to approve the resolution under seven dot one as presented has been made. Is there a second? Second? Our motion's made properly seconded. Is there any further debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, and we'll keep you informed.
All right. We'll move to item eight dot one. Mr. Livingston, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Kelly Arnold will be here. He's here to present the engineering services. I'm sorry, Jonathan Perry's gonna do it.
There you go.
Twenty-two of them, either one of them could have done it.
Are they gonna rock, are you gonna rock, paper, scissors as he's walking? Madam Clark.
I didn't want to interrupt you.
It's all good. Go ahead.
Jonathan, give us just a minute.
It's all good. It's all good.
I want to make sure that everyone has access to the materials, definitely. It is convenient to have gone electronic as we are, but it does occasionally create.
Oh, yeah.
Headaches for me, at least. All right. If you would, when you're ready.
So good evening, Mayor and council. So it was time for us to renew our on-call services agreement that we had. We chose three engineers last time. This time, we did it a little different. We sent out, solicited RFQs for seven different categories. We did water supply, water treatment, wastewater collection, wastewater treatment, trenchless rehabilitation, stormwater projects, and transportation. So what we did this time, we got thirteen, thirteen firms, engineers responded, and I think we chose five total, but we chose three for each category. So that's a little different than what we did in the past. We actually broke it down this time, instead of just having a blanket on-call services agreement out there. But that's, I mean, that's pretty much the gist of it.
Which of the firms, you mentioned to me in the brief, that there were, there was a newcomer to our list.
Yeah, we got.
We did change over a little bit of who's serving what.
Yeah, so currently, the way it's set up now, we got Withers, Rabanel, CDM Smith, and DeWuken Company. But now, we've got Kimley Horn, Withers Rabanel, CDM Smith, CJS Conveyance, they kind of snuck in. I think they're a little, they're a smaller firm, but they scored really well on wastewater collection. And then we got Weatherall Engineering for transportation. We got some really good qualified firms, and, you know, we feel confident in what we've chosen.
Council, are there any questions on item eight dot one? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the resolution for item eight dot one as presented? All right. Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the resolution for item eight dot one as presented. Is there any debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item eight dot two. Mr. Livingston, if you would, please. This one, actually, I'm gonna intro just for a second here. This event falls under our special event and street closure policy. It is policy CMOP 003. It was adopted last May. And call attention for the council, just remind council, section 22 says that for events denied by the city manager, the city manager will provide a memo to council with the reasons behind the denial. That's, you know, the packet. And then denials may be reviewed by the mayor and council upon request by the applicant. It's my understanding that the applicant has requested that this come before council to be able to discuss and learn of the facts. And so as such, it is on the agenda tonight as item eight dot two. So, Mr. Livingston, if you would please, and if there's a representative from GPD, to be able to give some detail on the applicant, the application, and the process, how we got here right now, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I think I'll just hand it over to Mr. Powers there and let him give you a background on the application.
Evening. Good evening. A little bit about that application process. This application, it was received by me. It first went to DDD, Downtown Goldsboro. From my understanding, after speaking with the applicant, it was sent to her, or it was sent to DDD back in June of last year. I did not receive it till November, December, and when I looked at it in January, it was the wrong application. They had used the previous application, because we've changed the application process like two, three times since then. So I looked at the application. We looked at it. It was the wrong one, so I sent her the information saying, this is the new application. Here's the new fees, you know, send that to me. When I did get it back, it was not filled out all the way. There was things missing in it. So trying to work with her, I contacted her, explained to her that things were not, you left things blank, things that we have to have on there, signatures and stuff. So I sent her Adobe signature with everything she requested. Now, at that time, she had put in for tier one, but she was requesting Center Street closure. You know, anything closing Center Street is automatically a tier four. So I expressed to her, it is a tier four, and she asked why. I said, because you are closing part of Center Street, and any closure on Center Street will be a tier four. She said that she didn't have the budget for it. She wasn't, didn't want to do that. So she said, I just, no street closure. I said, well, then, I'll send it to you. You sign off on everything. I'll get it to the city manager for his approval. And at that time, we realized that it was during the airshow, that Saturday of the airshow. So I had her on the phone. I told her, I said, look, I talked to the chief about it. We probably have no police support there. It is part of the airshow. And she said, no, we have to have it. It's gotta go through. And I expressed to her again that there's probably not gonna be any police support, but I'll send it up, you know? So I sent it up, all the way up to city manager. I did get word from city manager that he did not feel comfortable signing off on it because of safety factors, because they are using a run group that actually puts up a flatable that they can run across, and it would actually time them, where they have to use a road for that. And we expressed that to the applicant as well, that the place, the people that you're using actually, you know, they need a road. And she goes, we're just putting it on the grass, just, you know, send it up. So I did that. I asked her about the application fee. She said she paid the application fee to Downtown Goldsboro, which sometimes that happens, because she is renting the hub at the same time. So after I sent it up, it was not approved. It said it'd go to city council. Me and Austin from Downtown Goldsboro, we were communicating back and forth with each other. And he had said that they had not actually rented the hub yet, and that the only thing that was paid was a refundable $100. And then I questioned him, saying, well, I was told that $100 was the application fee. He said, no, that's the refundable fee. So I contacted her back and said that I would need the application fee to be able to go forward with the application. Well, she was really upset, so Downtown Goldsboro, they met with her, and they actually contacted Wayne Community College. And Wayne Community College has a 5K route for their event that they do Cure for Colors. And Wayne Community College, from what I was told from DDD, Wayne Community College said that they could use the facility for free, same time, same everything, and use their route. So that was offered. Look, we could do that. And she said, well, I've already put a lot of money in this. And when Austin asked her about, you know, we haven't received any money, just a $100 refundable deposit. She was like, well, I thought it would be waived. And we were like, the only people that can waive it would be city council. And then she said, well, it's going in front of the council. And I said, well, no, I have to do the agenda for it to go through city council. And so there was some discussion there, and then DDD said, well, they will give her the refundable $100 back to be able to be, go towards the application, so we can go ahead and get it on the agenda, because that was like just days before the deadline. So we did that. She agreed to it, and we're here now.
So the... Okay. Mr. Livingston, is there anything to add?
Well, you know, this event is a very, an event that's been held here before. It's for a very, very good cause, and I think the issue here is really about timing. Three hundred and sixty-five days in the year, the airshow day is the largest event we have in Wayne County, Goldsboro. We expect over 200,000 people coming into the county to see the airshow. If it holds true to what it did the past two years. My concern is that something could happen out here, and we wouldn't have anybody that could respond in a timely manner. And that just puts people in an unsafe position that I don't want to, you know, do for somebody. I understand that they've made commitments, and they've got a website, a saw, that kind of stuff. But, you know, is that worth the risk of putting someone's life at issue? Because it really is a dangerous situation when you have no law enforcement support or public safety or EMS support, because they're really gonna be everywhere, stationed elsewhere. The one event, this one, that Saturday, is gonna be, EMS are gonna be all over the place except for around downtown, hardly, because of the airshow.
So it's, so you've denied the application, and then it's being appealed up to city council?
I denied it based on bullet number five. The event would conflict with previously planned programs organized and conducted by the city or nongovernmental agencies scheduled for the same time or place. In other words, if this event would have been held at any other time, virtually any other time, but in the middle of the airshow on Saturday, we would have had a way to make it work for downtown. But because of the airshow, I mean, it takes literally every bit of our resources and the county's resources and every auxiliary person that they have when you have that many people coming into this city. into this city.
So counsel, the, again, just receding the policy, denials may be reviewed by the mayor and city council. Are there any questions from counsel of, of Mr. Powers or Mr. Livingston?
I have some concerns.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe not necessarily questions for you, Sergeant Powers, but some things that stood out to me was, she put in her application in June twenty twenty-four, and it didn't get to whoever it got to until November. And then there was some more review in January.
Yes.
That timeline, to me, is way too long of a gap to not be addressing these things. I don't know what that looks like internally, because a lot has changed since she did this last year. Counsel was approving everything, it came right to us, processes have changed unbeknown to her for whatever reason. But to me, I think we really need to cut down when these requests come in, if they're supposed to go where they're supposed, we gotta figure that process out. And I'm not pointing fingers at you or anybody, but from June to November is unacceptable for somebody trying to hold an event. Personally, what I would say to the applicant, and she is here, is to, is to accept the Wayne Community College opportunity, only because it, we created a policy, in my opinion, or we have this mantra that says, do it downtown. But when people want to do it downtown, there's always something that is just not as friendly, it's just easy doing it downtown. The airshow starts at ten. I would hate for me to have any emergency on Slocombe Street and not have any type of public safety folks to come and get me because all of them are at the airshow. That is a hard sale for me. And it's a hard thing to say out loud to people, to think that everybody is gonna be in this one space, and it's gonna be hard to reach people.
Well, actually, the shift, the shifts will be working. So the police shifts will be working, just the personnel that will do off-duty work, or will be available to do off-duty work, all personnel that are working the airshow. So it's one of those, the officers on deck, things, just like the Christmas parade. So they're gonna have officers, they'll have officers, day shift officers, evening shift officers. They're gonna have the officers that are actually working the days. So people will have officers responding, you know, if something happens. But they're working, they're not working a special event. So there won't be any help from us. Not saying they couldn't get the sheriff's department to help, but the sheriff's department's gonna be at the airshow as well.
And, and that's cool. I'm just, I, I think, I, I don't think we did completely right by this, the timeframe in which it took to get a response to her, to me, seems unacceptable. And I just want to say out loud that I hope she changes her event to another location that's a little bit more welcoming. I think it can still be done considering that the show kicks off at ten AM, the airshow on that day. And I wish that we can accommodate her and make this, this was a very successful event, and it raised a lot of awareness of what she's trying to do, and her truth that she lives every single day. But I'm just saying out loud, I hope she accepts the Wayne Community College opportunity. And I hope she keeps it there.
Counsel, any other comments or questions?
I had a question for you. I'm reviewing the policy, policy that we put in place on May the sixth. Why was the application fee only one hundred dollars when it qualifies for tier four?
Because she changed it to a no street closure.
No street closure?
So she changed, once she changed it to a no street closure, it goes, since there's no street closure, not many event, the city's not gonna be using too many assets, it goes to tier one because of the, how many people she's gonna have at the event. So because tier four, it was, tier one is no street closure whatsoever. Then if you look at tier two, there's a street closure minimum, and it's like people, how many people, two hundred to five hundred, then it keeps going down. Tier three is street closure other than Center Street. Tier four is any part of Center Street, street closure, and that amount of people. So when she first did the application, she put tier one, but she said, street closure, Center Street. So that's where I had to speak to her and say, well, that is a tier four. And that's when I had to explain to her the difference between tier four and tier one, which is on the application. And that's when she said, well, I don't have the funds, the budget, or anything like that, so we're not gonna make it a street closure. That's why it was resent to her, signing it, no street closure.
And my only concern is the certified course by Run the East says that the runner will have access to all roads and the curb. So that's the certified course, so.
And we, we discussed that with her, because we told her, without a street closure, they will not be able to set up on the street. And she said, she's set up on the grass. So I mean, I tried to explain everything to her, I tried to explain to her about Wayne Community College. I even went to the fact that she was worried about the time. I said, well, you can start thirty minutes late, put a sign at the hub. And from my understanding, Run the East will actually update their website to say it would be at Wayne Community College. And then just start thirty minutes late. So if you have anybody that shows up on time here, they'll have plenty of time to get to Wayne Community College for the event. That was expressed to her.
Counsel, any other, any other comments or questions on the briefing?
Well, I absolutely support, support the event. It was a, a good event last year, and I hope that it-
Yes, ma'am.
Am I able to speak?
At this time, we're doing a, a brief with, with the staff over the application. Does, council has a decision to make on what we want to do, if we want to ask for additional information from the applicant, or if we want to move forward with the information that was, that was given to us and uphold the manager's denial? What's the will of council?
I would like to hear from the applicant.
All right. So is that in the form of a motion?
It is.
All right. So you're at requesting additional information, so a motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, motion's been made and seconded to request additional information to be able to hear from the applicant. Is there any debate on this? All right.
Have we done this before?
We've not. This is the first one that is a appeal up to the council under the existing policy. So we're trying to set a precedent of the right way to, the right way to handle these, the right way to handle these. All right. So a motion's been made and properly seconded to seek additional information from the applicant. Hearing no debate, we'll call the vote. All in favor of hearing from the applicant, please raise your hands. All opposed, same sign. Understood. All right, motion passes. We'll seek additional information if the applicant would come forward. And again, I want to primarily keep the conversation on the facts. No one is debating the intensity of, of the need, or the merit of the, the event, is simply being able to logistically support the event in this location, understood?
I understand that. And respectfully, there were a lot of things that he said that were not true. And my, my application actually went in, in May, sent to him. If you guys want proof, I can prove it. I've got the emails, like, but like I said, several things that were said were not true. I am very organized, I have everything in place. I have the email that stated that I was good to go back in, maybe from Austin, probably in June. Again, I can, I can get those dates for you if you want. And I put together all of this, just like I did last year. It was never told to me that there was going to be any issue, that it needed to go in front of the council. If so, this should have, like, like Brandy said, it should have happened way, way sooner. And now, I am going to have to foot a large bill that I can't afford because of things that were not properly communicated to me. And I am extremely upset about it, because as you can see, I, I, I have my hands full. I love him, but I'm doing it for him to bring awareness to his condition, so that when people see him out in the community, they don't have to stare and, you know, and, and wonder. They can be like, oh, hey, that's Anthony, this is what, this is what he deals with, this is what his parents deal with. I have several people signed up already, I have put thousands of dollars into this event. I don't make any money from this. This is purely, purely to bring awareness to his condition. I'm going in the hole this year, obviously, because of all of this. But if there was an issue, it should have been brought to my attention sooner. And there was a breakdown, a severe breakdown in communication. And I am very upset. And you will not have to worry about me having any more events downtown Goldsboro, because that, they, they, if you can't communicate, then I, I can't, I can't do anything clearly. I wouldn't be here if I didn't care. But the fact that you say that, oh, well, you can't have it on the day of the, of the airshow, it's not during the airshow, it's before the airshow, we're gonna be done by the time the airshow starts. I have planned it, I have planned everything to be downtown. And two weeks ago, they tell me, oh, well, just move it to the college. Well, it's not that simple. It's really not that simple for an event that I have been planning for a year. So I, and, and about the fees, no, I, I've paid what they asked me, I have, I sent so many emails saying, what else do you need, what else do you need, what else do you need, seriously, one a month. And no, silence, complete silence. And, you know, like I said, I just, I've spent a lot of time and money on this, I've spent, you know, I, it's just not as simple as just moving it to a different location. And I just don't feel like I should have to do that for something that I have been planning and got approval for months ago.
But you mentioned that you would have to fit an even larger bill. What would those expenses be?
Um, so if we don't have the run, I'm gonna have to refund all the people who have already signed up. I've already paid for Run the East, I've already paid for the shirts, I've already paid for the medals, I've already paid for the marketing materials. And all of that comes out of my pocket. I mean, does somebody want to refund me? I mean, because it, it's, it's a significant expense, and I, he's, he's a significant expense, and-
And you're doing, and you're doing a good thing for your son.
It just doesn't seem like it. It seems like, like every time I try to do something good, it turns into something bad.
This one, I mean, we'll see how, how council goes. But I think that this particular weekend, it would be, it would be a bad decision for us to commit additional resources, given the inflow of people starting six and seven in the morning.
So why wasn't this communicated with me prior?
I don't know. That I don't know. All I can go with is-
Well, as long as you, as, as long as somebody admits that, because all I'm getting are excuses.
I don't have any excuses for you. All I can vote on are the things that are in front. And I don't, I, I don't support the idea of taxing addition, not taxing, of, putting additional burdens on law enforcement and EMS and things that morning. I, I don't. I think that would, would be a recipe for something that could poorly, and I don't want that. So I, I do support the, the event, and I support having the event. I want the event in Goldsboro, I want it in downtown, I want it wherever you want it. But I have to do it at a time and a location that I believe we can effectively support the event.
I just wish it would have been brought to my attention greater than three weeks before my event. Like I said, you guys won't have to worry about me next year, because it will not be happening downtown. Not that you guys care, but.
I care.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How many officers supported the event last year? Like, how many, how much hands-on support from GPD did you have at your race last year?
I only remember seeing Sergeant Powers.
So one?
One.
I don't think-
I didn't have anybody else.
I don't think it's a huge tax or burden on our law enforcement to have one officer during that time. And what I don't want to do is to place priority over something else and negate this event. Because to me, it is just as important, it is just as significant. And I don't like the message that it sends. I get what everybody is saying on this side, and I understand the decision that was made. But I don't think it is going to cause so much confusion and disruption in how we do business with our personnel, with GPD, if we have somebody there to support your thing. What I don't like is, last year, when you came before this board, there were a lot of untruths, there were a lot of unfair statements that were made about you, about the organization. There were a lot of unfair questions that was asked. And here we are again this year, and it's something else. And just like last time, I don't think it was fair last year, I don't think it's fair this year to have one officer. I don't think it's too much of an ask to have one officer so that you can continue to do your event downtown. But I stand by my statement. I, I don't know how I can help you in, in what you're doing to move it to Wayne, but it just seems like a safer option, because I'd much rather be somewhere where I'm welcomed, and, and, and I want to be in that space. But I am asking this council to approve this appeal, because it's not gonna take much away from the airshow, in my opinion.
Yes, sir.
Could we ask Officer Powers, how many officers, I, I know she said they don't, she only seen one, but how many would it, if you would, if you would, just come back, come back in the microphone, microphone, for us.
Last year, I actually went there and volunteered my time, because they, we were busy doing other things at that time too, last year. So with this event, the issue that I would see with it is, it's not a road closure. And since it's not a road closure, they're gonna be running in traffic at the very beginning, and they, where are they gonna set up, where they gonna run through? It would be best, because last year, there was not, there was not a lot of participation, I think it was a hundred, how many of y'all had last year?
We had eighty that were signed up.
Yeah, eighty that were signed up. That size there, we actually went in there, I helped shut the street down. We, I stayed for the whole event, opened up the street and everything, and it went by pretty well. What she's requesting now because of funds is no street closure. So the, the safety aspect of it, even if you have one officer there, where are you gonna start it at? You're gonna start it out at Center Street, just let them run with the traffic, you know, and then move the, you, you can't move the sign or what they're gonna run over, it's gotta stay in the street. So, you know, if it was a street closure, but then again, getting the personnel, even if one personnel, you know, I, I can't, I can't approve that.
The Greater Goldsboro Road Run, like, they didn't have anything, like, closed off. There were no, there were no cones or anything, we all drove in on that way.
Yeah, we had two officers working that, because it's a large event. We had a car in the front, a mark, police car in the front, and a police car in the back. Because it's a, it's a large event.
Okay, ma'am, how many, how many do you have registered for this year?
Um, forty-two.
So even less than last year?
Yeah, it's a smaller event this year. Probably because of the airshow. I mean, who, who knows, who knows? And that's fine, and I'll, I'll learn my lesson for next year. However, like I said, it, I, I did not know about the airshow, it was not brought to my attention. Yeah, so it, it will be a smaller event. Like I said, there was only one there last year, the, the roads weren't closed for the Greater Goldsboro Run, everything was fine, they didn't have any issues. I took part in that event, everything went great, everything went smooth. So.
And the difference is for the street closure, it's one hundred dollars and four hundred dollars.
Yes, because it's Center Street. Now, with the new route that they're looking at for the one that they caper chase, they're doing a new route, none of Center Street's gonna be shut down. It's actually gonna start at Chestnut Street at Center and do the route. So as far as that goes, the reason why it was four hundred was because the closure of Center Street.
Okay. There's, there's a solution to be had here. I'm, I'm going to recommend that we uphold the manager's decision. I'm also going to ask the manager to work with GPD and work with the applicant, and see if we can figure out a solution here, even if it's moving it a little bit earlier, whatever it is. My suggestion is still to uphold the manager's decision, but I'm asking you, please, see if there's a way to, you know, we're, we're allowed, we're, we're allowed to be a sponsor in different things, figure it out. But my suggestion to council is to uphold the manager's decision, with the caveat that I'm asking you, see if we can figure this thing out. There, it sounds like there's a path to yes. Figure this thing out. So counsel, oh, yes, sir, I, I'll see your hand, and then I'll come right back to you.
I was gonna say, so are you also, so if you're saying that you are wanting to uphold his decision, and also the policies and procedures that we put in place last year, that would definitely make this race not a tier one race.
Right.
Because if we're gonna set a precedence of anybody who wants to come and appeal anytime, we're setting a precedence tonight. So you're saying you're gonna change it also from a tier four, which is what we voted on last year, and you're recommending that it's changed to a tier one as well?
No, no, no. What I, what I'm asking is that on the application that has been filed, that we uphold the manager's decision, period, flat, period. And then if, if the application, or if the applicant is able to work with the manager, get a new application submitted, and find a balance that can work, then, then there's, then there's an option. But on the one that is here right now, I'm recommending that we uphold the manager's decision. Yes, sir.
I am sympathetic to, to, to what happened to some degree, but so far- I am sympathetic to, to, to wha- what happened to some degree, but, um, so far as figuring out a solution, I think one's already been figured out to move, move to the, move to the college. I think the staff went out of their way to figure out a plan B. And I realize this is our first endeavor with an appeal, and I think we all did the best that we could trying to figure this thing out moving forward. But no offense to the applicant, but what we've ended up here with, with this particular method of appeal, is a back-and-forth between the applicant and our public safety folks. And this is without a doubt would be a liability situation. I mean, I'm certainly not going to vote to, to, to step outside of what the, the, the guidance here is, and I'm certainly in favor of and appreciative of the fact that the staff stepped in and found a plan B. So I think we, we have a couple of things to deal with here. I think, in my opinion, of, of course, we're gonna have to make a decision here, but how we handle these sort of situations moving forward, we need to figure that out, because I don't think this is fair to anybody, the applicant or our public safety folks, to have to stand here and do that or have it back as a
So, well, yes, sir. I, I agree with you, you're, not disagree with anything you say, but what I am saying
If either of y'all would like to have a seat, uh, feel free. If y'all, we'll call you back up if there's, if there are additional specific questions.
But, but given that we didn't have a process, and we're learning on the fly with this, and this is our first encounter with something of this nature, I think it, I don't think they were battling. I just think they were stating facts on each side of their position. I don't think it was a battle. But what I do think is that I don't think that we should just disapprove it and then try to find a solution. I think we should go off and try to find a solution. And if one can't be reached, then we come back and say no. Cuz I think if we adjust the time a little bit, then, and it's only forty-two people, that, that I think there's a plausible way that they, that could still happen, and we still do the airshow. Cuz he did state that every policeman will not be at the airshow. There will be policemen working. So that means that somebody will patrol downtown at some point in time. So I'm just saying, let's, let's try to work on the solution first before we just say no.
Yes, sir, and then, yes, ma'am.
Point taken. I think this, in my opinion, in my mind, the solution has already been met or come up with, which is changing the location. And I understand what the sergeant is saying about the difference between on-shift, on-duty law enforcement personnel versus a off-shift, private security-type situation, and where those resources are gonna be put at. But the biggest concern that I have at the end of the day, other than figuring out so this doesn't have to unfold like this again, is our, our public safety folks and our manager has said to us, this is, this is not recommended because of this liability situation. I'm not voting for something that somebody has said that's a liability situation and put myself in the middle of that. I mean, it's the airshow for pizza. That's just my, my thoughts, and thank you for
I, I, I got that, but we're, nobody, I don't think nobody up here is saying that, that we want to accept the liability risk. Where's, all I'm asking is that we look for a plausible solution before, and if we can't find one without accepting that risk, then I understand it, right? I'm not, I'm not saying that. But what I am saying is, let's look for a plausible solution first before we just say no, because we do want her to, to continue to have the race downtown. So let's try to work with her to try to see if we can find a plausible solution. I do understand that there's the possibility that we can't, but let's try and work first and try to find a plausible solution that all will be happy at the end of the day. It might not happen, but let's just try. That's all I'm asking.
Mr. Mayor, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I strongly disagree with Councilmember Boye in terms of what this looks like, because we see it all the time. This is the first time we've done an appeal, but when public hearings come before us, it is a this one, that one, agree, disagree. And we hear it back and forth. We hear it for hours, however long it takes for us to get to the end of that. So we see that, and I don't think that this was anything disrespectful that happened today. I think it is important that we hear from the other side of it, just so that we can make a better decision. I totally support our manager and Sergeant Powers for his, uh, perspective on what this looks like, but at the end of the day, it comes to us for an appeal, for seven other perspective as well. And I thank you for honoring my perspective by even bringing it to me to be appealed. But again, if this, I, I think we should include at least hearing from the applicant if the applicant decides to say something. Sometimes we offer the applicant to come and speak. We're almost like pushing them to the podium to come and speak and say something. So if we are willing to extend that, and it doesn't matter that it includes our GPD, if, if we welcome it in other areas, and it needs to be welcomed even when it includes staff in, in, in our own personnel. So I, I, I completely disagree. I think it was pleasant. I think it was important to hear, um, from the applicant, uh, whether it was true, not true. I think it was still important to have the information and to hear it from her perspective and any applicant's perspective. So I don't want us to, to stifle people's voices, um, even in the process, and I, and I, and I'm willing to, to note that with it.
I have, I have one question for the applicant. Ma'am, when were you given the new application? When were you given the new application?
Not until, um, January, and I had already had everything, um, completed at that point, just because that's just the kind of person I am. I, everything was already set up, and, um, like, I already had all the flyers, all the, um, the Run the East, uh, everything.
So you can accept registrants up until the day of your race. Um, did the majority of your registrants come in like the last couple of weeks before your race last year?
Um, quite, quite a few did. I could, I can't be certain, um,
So if that's the case, roughly, how many would you guess are gonna be running in your race? If you've got forty-two registered now, and the majority came in the last few weeks before your race, you can have registrants up to the day of your race with Run the East. So how many are you guessing that would be additional?
Um, additional, I don't, I probably would say running will probably be about forty, just because even last year, we had eighty sign up, and I think, um, maybe sixty actually ran. So like, I think it would probably sit right there.
Probably roughly about eighty is what you're saying?
No, forty, I'm sorry.
You're at forty-two now?
Yeah.
So if you have the last few weeks, and you could register up until the day of, how many additional?
Yeah, I'm saying, like, so we had, like, um, we had eighty registered last year, um, total, and then there were only like sixty that ran, so I would say we'll probably be sitting about forty actually hitting the pavement.
All right, counsel, so we do ultimately, and again, have, uh, are there any other questions for the applicant? Right here, no, feel free to have a seat if you'd like. All right, counsel, so we do need to, uh, need to make a decision. Ultimately, trying to follow the policy, denials may be reviewed by the mayor and counsel upon request by the applicant. The applicant made the request. Uh, it was then, uh, my prerogative to ask counsel, you know, focusing on the word "may", if we wanted to hear additional information from the applicant. The counsel, uh, motion was made, seconded, voted on yes, to hear additional, uh, from the applicant, again, following, uh, a reasonable interpretation of this policy. So where we are now, believe that we have heard additional information and believe that it's time to, to reach a conclusion. Um, Mr. Livingston, is there anything that you have heard that you would like to add, or is there anything that you need to add before we put this thing to a vote?
Um, you know, I, I'm sympathetic with the, uh, applicant, and I would like to be able to work with her, but I, I have to listen to what the departments tell me, and they have to, we have to keep in consideration the safety of people. And if they're telling me that they don't have the staff to support it, that's the reason why. And given that it is on airshow day, I can understand that. And, but at the same time, we have offered an alternative location. I, I, I just have to stand by my denial, Mr. Mayor.
So counsel, is there a motion to either, uh, overrule or to uphold, uh, the manager's decision on this specific application?
I'll make a motion that we uphold the manager's recommendation.
All right, motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'm gonna second it.
All right, a motion's been made and properly seconded that we uphold the manager's decision on the current application as currently phrased. Uh, is there any further debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed, same sign, seeing two, motion passes. All right. Mr. Livingston, if at all possible, please have a conversation, and we'll see if there's a way to do, do something. Whether it's P and R or something. Okay. All right, ma'am, thank you. All right, counsel, that concludes our items under new business. Uh, Mr. Livingston, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just wanted to say, uh, thank you to you and the council for selecting me as city manager. I appreciate the activities today, um, swearing in. Um, it was a very nice event, so I'd like to thank the employees and the community that came out and supported me. Um, and I promise to do my best, and I have an open-door policy. If anyone has any issues with the city and, uh, concerns that they'd like to bring to me, I would suggest they give me a call and come see me. And, uh, that's all for my report tonight.
Yes, sir. All right, we'll move to mayor and council member comments. Uh, as it is the second meeting of the month, we'll begin with Councilman White, uh, to my left, and then we'll work our way across the desk. Councilman White, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just, uh, shout out to, uh, New Hope Village out there on New Hope Road, uh, for bringing to my attention their, their speed limit. It's a quaint little area out there on New Hope, and, um, they have a lot of elderly there, averaging between seventy-five to eighty-eight as an age limit, and they still get out and try to walk and get some kind of health in there. Um, so I like, I like to thank, um, the city manager and Jonathan for, uh, uh, rapid response to their requests out there for, uh, reducing the speed limit out in New Hope, uh, New Hope Valley, Village. And then, um, lastly, uh, I'd just like to thank, uh, uh, all our people who work for, uh, the city, who, who's doing a great job in, um, upholding the values of what we believe in. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Wicks, floor is yours.
The only comment I have was for the council. I just wanna thank you guys for allowing me to serve on the Finance Committee with, um, Mayor Protem Jones for the last few months. And it's been very interesting to learn the financial process and review the budget, so I'm looking forward to that, um, over the next few weeks and then, um, next month or so, as we adopt a new budget.
Counselor Matthews?
No comment.
Protem Jones?
Yes, first, I'd like to welcome Ms. Anita Reese. We're so very glad to have you. Look forward to working with you. I would also like to thank the city staff and employees for all that you do. I'd also like to thank Ms. Laura for last week. Um, I had a dire concern in my district. There was a tree down and some electrical items down, and I called her, and, uh, it was done. She took care of it. I wanna thank Rick for doing that as well. Um, I really do thank you, Ms. Laura. Uh, there were some other items, too, but, uh, I forgot to mention that last week, and I did want to thank you and, and Rick and his staff, because it meant a lot, because the tree that was down was also by a daycare. Um, and, um, it, it didn't matter whether it was by a daycare or not, but, you know, there were children there. And so I really do appreciate, um, the staff for your, uh, quick response. I really appreciate that. Um, I had the honor and privilege to attend in the conference, uh, this past weekend, the North Carolina Black Alliance. It had, um, great information with elective officials and very inspiring. Uh, also, um, I'm not gonna take away from, uh, you, but I also was honored to be in my district now, which is, um, Ms. Aiden George, the Crisis Center, to honor her on her retirement and her eighty-seventh birthday, and I do agree, she is the angel on Slocum Street. It was a wonderful ceremony.
Councilwoman Taylor, floor is yours.
I just wanna give a shout out to, um, Rick Bostick Construction and Demolition. They've been doing a really great job, um, doing the demolitions, uh, around town in a, a couple of the districts. And, um, I also want the residents of District Three to take notice that there's a very big blighted structure that's recently come down right across from Piggly Wiggly. Um, so I'm glad to see that's, that's gone, and I'm hopeful for the future for that area. Um, also, I want to, on behalf of Growing Generations and the Goldsboro Housing Authority, um, invite everyone out tomorrow in Lincoln Homes, April twenty-second, from twelve to three. It's Earth Day Fun Day. So a lot of festivities and activities going on, and, um, hope to see you there.
Councilwoman, floor is yours.
A couple of things. As always, thank you to each and every one of our hard-working city employees. You're all valued, appreciated, and the city could not run without you, and I take great pride in being able to say that at every opportunity. Welcome to our new deputy clerk. A pleasure to have you officially. Welcome to our city manager officially, and it is a pleasure to attend the swearing-in this morning. It was wonderful. Um, one more special shout-out to our code enforcement team and our minimum housing officer, Mr. Polak, former council member. Those guys are really getting it done. Uh, there's, I've got three different issues going on in my district right now that they're, they're on it. And, and not only my district, but, I mean, there's five other ones as well, and that, they're working hard, um, to, to be able to get things done and help clean up the city the same way that Councilwoman Taylor here is leading our efforts, um, to start taking down some of these structures and, and getting, I'm glad to see that we're funding that now, because it's past time to start dealing with, with that kind of stuff. And, yeah, hats off to Councilwoman Taylor for spearheading that effort, and I'm happy to sit here beside her and, and join in that effort. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. My comments, uh, are just simply acknowledging and saying thank you to those that try to do good things. Uh, this weekend, we got to go and honor, you know, Elder Aiden George, forty years of service to her community in that specific way. Had to watch her building fall down twice and still stayed on it and watched it, uh, watched it rise back up and watches, and watches it serve folks every single day. It was an honor to be able to be there and officially hand her, uh, that proclamation. I appreciate you referencing that earlier. That was, that was a treat. I don't know how else to say it. That was, that was just, that was purely a treat. And with regard to the work that is happening in the city around code enforcement and around planning and around zoning, the work that happens there can be incredibly thankless, because what you're having to do is tell somebody whose property or whatever isn't living up to the rules that they're gonna have to. And that's hard, you know? We have very strict constitutional protections for folks' property. That's a thing that's kind of baked into our, uh, baked into our, our American jurisprudence. So when you tell someone, you're gonna fix this, or we're gonna tear it down and send you a bill, that's a big thing to say. We never, never, never want to wield that hammer lightly, but we cannot be afraid to use that tool at the same time. And I think that this counsel and this administration has found a balance of trying to notify and work with property owners while also acknowledging that all of their neighbors also need our support. We have to do our job. We have to be the referee that enforces the rules in that way to allow everyone else to continue to live there and enjoy their property and enjoy their homes. So I appreciate the work that everyone is doing. I know it is hard. I know sometimes you get yelled at, so do I, and, uh, we're very much in that one together. So I just simply wanna say thank you to all those folks that go out there and sometimes go, what in the world did I sign up for? You signed up for helping to make the city a better place. Those, that concludes my comments. Mr. Lawrence, you informed me earlier that we would have a closed session for personnel? Is that correct?
Yeah, my first time back, it's gonna make everybody real happy, not personnel. It's a litigation matter.
Well, I'm glad that you're back, even though you're gonna hold us here for a few minutes longer. Uh, so with that, uh, if there's nothing further to come before counsel this time, we'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for matters related to litigation?
Yes.
All right, motion's been made. Is there a second? All right, motions are made and properly seconded to go into closed session to discuss matters related to
Litigation.
Uh, all in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right? Thank you, everybody. Sergeant.
Same signs, seeing none, we stand adjourned until May 5th? Is that right? Until May 5th.